We have signed in chief.
For people that want public comment. I really thought they were important. So you haven't signed in, you want to talk later? It's signed up. Next second half of the board is to approve today's agenda.
You want to approve the agenda?
I will second that. Then we can second any discussion. And now on Thursday, I.
Aye.
Bush carries. Next is to approve both events at one twenty three twenty three.
I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented from January the twenty third, twenty twenty.
Second.
Then move and seconded any discussion. Very not all fair to say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Bush carries. Next is to approve the claim to make one thirty.
Want you to approve the January thirtieth, twenty three claims for.
I'll take it up. Then move and seconded any discussion. Very not all fair to say aye.
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 Bush carries. Now we have consideration approved for quick claims for our vacant streets, alleys and leaves. Still, you want to talk about that?
Basically, it started probably three or four years ago. Went through the process of vacation. That back to the twenty and then. Now with rest of the eating that ground back to the landowners. They can have right to it and we can plant some deck dogs off it.
And some of these streets are actually being parked.
Yes, yes. They never were even really established. And we contacted all the landowners years ago. Was what they all kind of agreed to do, so. Everybody's getting what they wanted. And these all have to be notarized with human doing in science, but just so you guys know. Sorry, I'll give you something to do today, find the notary.
Alright, I would make a motion to approve the nine foot claim deeds for the vacant streets and alleys and leaves as presented.
Seconded.
Then move and seconded any discussion. After that, over.
Please.
Aye.
For me, aye.
Aye.
Bush carries. Next is consideration to approve the condemnation for point deeds.
I make a motion to appoint Jeremy and Andrew to the condemnation for.
And seconded.
Then move and seconded any discussion which.
Uh, we.
Any other discussion? Very not all fair to say aye.
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 There it is. Now we got this part done, economic engineering budget review, Jim.
Andy first?
Well, I got Jim here, but you can first.
Can I go first? Okay, good, good. Well, good morning. I want to try to think out so that I don't forget to say anything and then I don't ramble on and on. Alright, we're bringing life into Harden County. We are here again to talk about bending the curve in Harden County and we want to have our population increase and we want to have jobs increased, our housing, our schools. And everything so that we can still become a Bible heart county. We are looking at making a conscientious effort to make a change. With that, we need someone to lead the charge. Make that their full time job, just not me, to overlook and help our volunteer teams. We want things to get done and we want to make things happen. So we really want to get Harden County so that our population isn't going down like it has been and bringing life back in. So this is our, our little. Our little. Thanks, remember that life in Harden County. So Jim.
Great, good to see you supervisor. Jim Bowman with client energy. Think we have a presentation. I don't know if it's too late to look that up or not. I can't do it, it's too late now.
Really, uh, it's my.
Bye, it's fine, sorry. So can I, can I have my.
We have handcuffs, so prepare.
And it's okay, we have handles for it. So. Just to recap, back last year, actually Martin Bush and I were discussing economic development for Iowa Falls. And the need for some more strategic planning and, and as we discussed. Some of the challenges that are faced in, in Iowa Falls, in Harden County and frankly rural America. That became evident that you know, lots of great successes and good economic development occurring. The problem that Harden County was faced, continues to face, not unlike many other rural counties in Iowa and throughout the Midwest is population. So we had numerous discussions with this board and decided to test a new concept. Called economic architecture or economic engineering from a think tank through about Albuquerque, New Mexico. And I've been following this group for some time. I've worked in economic development for thirty plus years and, and Mark Walton, who started that think tank, wrote the book with Boomer's fails, and you're familiar with that. And he, he pretty much defined the problem that America's facing. We're currently in and he wrote a book over a dozen years ago of an inverted labor supply curve, meaning we have more jobs than we do workers. And it's very evident in Iowa, I think there's twice as many jobs that there are current workers, available workers. And it's certainly that way here in Harden County. At the same time, population is declining, especially in rural communities. And so the question is, what can we do about that? And it was determined to let's, let's, let's test this, this concept. So it's, it's actually a four phase approach. And the first phase, we had a small group in Atlanta, you were with us and we, we did that last May, I believe. In Iowa Falls and with a group of leaders, public and private leaders. Mainly from the Iowa Falls area development board. But we concluded that it made a lot of sense to be more. Performance driven or, or metrics, more transparency. And, and that let's take it to the next level, which was phase two. Phase two occurred right in this room in November. We had nearly a hundred people, many of you were with us. And we dove deeper into how could this economic engineering concept work in, in Harden County? And from there, we had a great turnout and there's been continued interest. And we formed a steering committee actually prior to phase two, which Cam agreed to lead and be part of a group of whole public and private leaders. To shepherd this process, so after that, that session in November. Great interest to continue to move forward into, into phase three. And what we're trying to do is bend the curve of the demographics and I wish I could, I could show you this, but I think you've all seen it's in your packet. Of a population trend in Harden County is going in the wrong direction. So for the past forty plus years, you're continuing to lose population. How do, how do we stop it? How do we, how do we curb, bend the curve? And that is, we believe, through fundamental economic development. But economic development is sort of like steroids. We're really joint forces. We hold hands, so to speak, countywide. We muster the resources and follow a very well thought out, detailed work kind of action. And what, what occurred in November was the, was the start of that and laid out not only the numbers. Which like, like a good business, it's, it's really numbers driven and oftentimes many economic development groups don't have very good numbers. They're general in nature, but this process will be very detailed in terms of where the people and the jobs have to come. At the same time, it builds on some capacity issues that are needed to grow your population, to grow your businesses, grow your jobs. So you have to do two at the same time. You have to work on capacity as well as working on, on job creation, population. For example, if you want to grow tourism, you, you probably need to also build your tourism assets. Why people would come to Harden County and where they would stay. So that the numbers match and, and they grow at the same time. So as well as having sort of your marketing and sales to attract people to, to visit and recreate in Harden County. We have to grow the reasons why they come and also where they stay, where they eat, where they, and why they could continue to come back. So you have to, you have to build that to pass workforce. We have to build housing to match the workforce requirements and, and what workforce can afford. So we've laid out a very methodical plan of managing this process under the steering committee. And moving forward into phase three. And keep in mind, phase three is going to provide Harden County with very detailed work plan and budget. But to get there, it will take time and money and continued focus. To, to accomplish that, we've put together our, our best estimates as a steering committee on what that would cost. And we've looked at a three year program, this is called operational management. And the first year, and it's in your packet, the first year is to let's, let's get phase three of the economic engineering completed, which is about thirty six thousand dollars. We would want to do that in the next ninety to a hundred and twenty days, you know, how fast we can move. And again, this is going to get Harden County something that maybe no other county, certainly in Iowa, maybe the United States would have. By the way, Mark, Dev and others are already working on baseline information. When that's completed, Harden County will be head and shoulders above many counties, just on basic primary data and information that's required. Understand how, how Harden County operates and how it can grow and develop. In addition, we would continue to have the Institute of Decision Making at the University of Northern Ireland engaged at a cost of seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. There would be project management costs of about a hundred thousand dollars. And this is where we envision having a full time person dedicated every day to work on this initiative. And that's beyond the capabilities of Mark or Dev. And I think, why do we need anyone else? Mark and Dev have jobs they're doing now, they're going to get much more involved and busier, but they do not have the time. They're just dedicated to overseeing the specifications, the management coordination of what will be a lot of movements when you see the. When you see the whole long plan that will come out of phase three. In addition to that, there would be meetings and event costs of roughly five thousand dollars, travel costs in and outside of the county. We definitely want to market promote this about ten thousand dollars and then any additional consultants that might be needed. So the total amount for, for the first year is estimated at a hundred and seventy five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. Each year going forward, we can't do this in one year, we have to continue the management of it. It's about a hundred and sixty two thousand dollars. So this will take money. This will take time, this will take commitment. And what we're asking today, and by the way, I am not necessarily asking to be having a line energy. I've been asked by the steering committee to, to present to you this request of committing to, to the first year. And also challenging others in the county to join. The other public sectors, the other private participants that see how important and valued this work going forward. But I would argue the county would make the commitment to at least the first year, maybe all three years, but at least the first year. I think that would continue to motivate those one hundred people that were in this room and more to join this, to be part of this, to help fund it going forward. And a very important part of this whole effort is leadership. And having worked in economic development for many years, my single most important thing is leadership. For public and private leaders, your leaders. What, what, what makes a good leader? I'm a big history fan, I currently listen to a lot of, a lot of World War One, World War Two audiobooks and Vietnam and. What I've discovered what inspires. Men, especially the, the men and women, to do things they would never think they could ever do. And charge, I'm reading about open hour right now. And what those men did on the island of open hour was just, it wouldn't happen had it not been for leadership. Had it not been for the courage of the leaders to do something that out of their comfort zone. To face the enemy and right now the enemy is what you're facing in terms of losing people. And I would argue that if you, if you ask the question yourself, will your children or your grandchildren live in your community, live in your county? And the children and grandchildren. Of people that you care about, their employees, businesses, if they will live here, five, ten years. If the answer is you don't know, maybe not, then what are we going to do? And if not do this, then what? And if not now, when? Thank you. Anybody else want anything else?
Yeah, I thought. John, that's one, economic development committee president. Meeting with Jim, talking about this and coming to the economic engineering meeting, obviously there's a lot of interest, over a hundred people coming to that. I was really surprised to see that. And as Jim said, we're losing these jobs or losing these people in the county, we've got that data already. So we have to have some sort of solution and if we don't, you know, follow this, which is. You obviously knew and it's going to take, it, it can't be. I think when we did studies before, there never was a follow up behind it, but this already has that in place of, you know, steps we're going to take. And it's just a matter of staying in a course, so it'd be a. And like I said to Jim, you know, I think the accountability is huge, you know. Yeah, it'd be fun for a year and come back and say, alright, these are the steps we've taken. Be held accountable for what we said we're going to do and make sure we're following trajectory as close as we can. So, but without the funding, all this falls flat on its face, we got to do something. And like I said, there's a lot of people that were involved with this that are, are watching and wondering what happens next, so. It would be a good project to fund and take the next steps because we have to do something or it's going to be exponential after ten years or so. On losses of people in Kennesaw. Thanks.
Steve? You have the battle.
Yeah, I can make another part of it. Yeah, I'm president of I F A D C and what Jim mentioned was the need for someone to be the champion of this cause. And that champion can't be Deb and it can't be Mark, they have jobs to do in their own areas. And I as president of I F A D C, you know, we hired Mark to do things that we need done, he's got a lot of irons in the fire. He can't drop everything to take this on. This funding needs to find that champion to lead us all. And I guess that's what I need to add to it, is that it can't be done with what we've got, that's why the funding is needed. So that we can get that person to be assisted by Deb, Mark, myself, other people around the room. Would help, but they can't take it on as their primary job because they have primary jobs.
Thank you. Any other comments? Angie.
I have some questions, so are all communities or all towns represented, represented during the presentation here?
They were all asked to be a part of it, but some chose not to be a part of it.
I think you had somebody at least to have a town.
New province over there. Yeah, new province, union was represented.
Or union. Was that covered?
Covered.
Covered because there.
Radcliffe was probably about the only town within here. But Taylor, Taylor was in on the first meetings and so, yeah, I mean, you know, with the, the board supervisors.
So are those, any of those people going back to the towns or, I mean, are they. Are the towns or the other meeting? Developers, they asked to help any funding goes into strictly down that.
The funding would come as a major campaign fundraising, you know, we're going to be looking for matching funds. We're going to be looking for grant opportunities. In fact, next week, we are engaging in a volunteer training that we received a grant for. So, so yes, you know, the, the ask will have to have. You know, and at what level that they can do that at, you know, that's yet to be determined. We need to go through phase three. So that we actually have a product and, you know, work with those volunteers and work with our individual leaders especially. To, you know, put the plan in place and move forward.
First, I did.
Go ahead.
So there's two ways to look at, two tracks of funding. The first track is operational and management. We're actually going to create an entity that right now falls under the steering committee. That may end up, you know, what leaders may become its own entity, yet to be determined. But to do that will take time and money and since we're, the main, two major costs are securing the funding for the consultants to help us. Get to phase three, which will be detailed budgets and work plans. That's thirty five thousand. That you're right, correct. And, and then that management person to coordinate all this, so a lot of the pieces that you looked at breaking this down into all the ways that jobs can be created. From business and tourism and housing issues, that, that person will coordinate the, work with existing entities that are in. That probably aren't working real close together right now, but have to under this umbrella. And, and communicate, navigate going forward. Then, once phase three is done, we will have a very clear picture of what it's going to take over time. To, to create those jobs, attract key people and with budgets. That will be sort of the real money of what it's going to take. And you know, it's overtime, this won't happen in years, probably the better part of five, ten years going forward.
So you see that person? Is it the person or whatever, a big employee or a consultant?
Great question, you don't know. I think we have a history of phase three, sooner than later, whether that person comes out or maybe is soft. Or a ten ninety nine employee until we can figure all that out. We're sort of taking steps going forward. Maybe ideally it is an employee of some entity, county or, or some group that's, that's already out there. I think we just got to decide all that. I think I probably vision for twenty twenty, twenty cities. And set it up that way, that way you create your funding source. Between everybody and how they're going to fund that, the thirty five thousand is your first step, they're really asking.
That's the most work.
If that's your sixty to ninety days, that means that you. Right, and then through there. I, I also believe that you have hundreds of people that are basically side of this thing. They are. The, the people that are volunteer, so we already like put them in categories that they, we asked what they were interested in. And we have, we've already assigned, so to speak, and worked on various proposals, basically, as phase three gets launched. So I, I mean, I look at this, instead of asking for a hundred and seventy five thousand dollar commitment today, you're asking for thirty five thousand dollar commitment today and then just create a committee. With other entities, obviously the county is the only one with skin of the game today. We need, the same thing I told you, they want, it takes community, it does not take. The happy, yes, we have to take his pocket, but everybody needs to be involved in this. Yeah, we're going to, the line energy is going to contribute again. I heard you went thirty to thirty five. But we're going to, I know I T C and I think we co op are in it. I expect more private sector members will step up, I mean, the progress that we're making. But I think that they, that county's definitely in will help continue to succeed, work rich and, and I, and I want the cities to say yeah. The cities, that are the community. Yeah, I think that it is, it is, it is all the cities in the county. And, and when it comes to the standard position, my recommendation is one of you should probably be maybe regulate, involve the steering committee. And maybe we're going to, we're going to create a management committee under that that will oversee this personally. But I think the county should have either one of you or designate a person that's overseeing and having input into those decisions of hiring, who that person is. And holding them accountable and, and you should be part of that. I think today what we need is what, what you said Lance, but I, but also defended that, that this could go forward. If we need to approach it in steps, you can come back and ask for the, the other amount, but we do see that budget fairly close to what it's going to take to get us through this next twelve months. About a hundred and, a hundred and seventy two thousand dollars. That included thirty five, right? That, yeah, it's thirty six, but yes, that, that's in there. There's true, you follow that, yeah. Yeah, first, Donald's got to follow next is move on with phase three and fund that, which again, we will, a line energy will be contributed to this. And if I, if I recall right, line of energy, well, the three energy paid for phase one. We paid a hundred percent for phase one and we paid roughly half of phase two. And maybe the other half. That's correct. And I'm assuming, I'm hoping you guys are probably going to be this halfway in this one. We're, we're certainly going to try, you bet. I think having the challenge, and that's what I see this, the county saying, hey, we challenge you to join us, that's the message I want to take back. And your message is the same message I'm saying is we have that skin in the game for you guys. Yes. Correct. And I, I want skin to be involved, cities to continue phase one. Or phase three, excuse me. As part of that and that could create a steering committee. With that twenty eight. The thirty six thousand, where you get it down on that, what do you think?
Uh, I'm, I'm fine with moving forward with that today. I would like to, if, if it passes, I would like to draw on our local option sale tax funds. I believe that those funds are in there for. On that one, and that would be worth the pay that you, if you just say come from. And then, yes, I really, then. Coming up with something, county, county share and utility, company share and then city share will be equitable. To new quarter. Again, I don't want this to turn into something like the recycling deal where the rural residents are paying a majority or a large share of the bill. And then some of the rural residents giving their service for their contributions.
Alright.
I would be in a race.
So move forward with the thirty six thousand, is this thing wrong?
I make a motion to approve thirty six thousand dollar contribution to phase three of the economic engineering project. Being taken out of the. Betterment line item from the local auction sales.
Then move and seconded any discussion, obviously if you guys manage, we're only in for half that. And I also want to, there's two other costs that we're going to, we're going to, maybe this comes from a match, but. The Institute for Decision Making have been vital, they've been very, very helpful. And it's basically their time and travel, and I think there's a line item in there for them over twelve months. And then there will be some travel costs for the consultants, just like both the other two phases, but we'll figure out the details, but. Commit to whatever level, I think the steering committee can go back and sharpen our pencils and, and do what we can to really launch phase three. I would suspect it would come back before you and give you regular updates with Deb's help and most likely what additional money will be needed to push us through this year. And will there, will the steering committee go leave with the cities as well?
I definitely think that the leadership thing.
Yeah, some, somewhere here. Alright. What, what about cities that can't afford? Is it, is it mandatory or what? How do you view that? That's what you would create as part of it. Maybe it's based on valuation, maybe it's based on population, maybe it can be based on different things. I've got a sneeze in the mouth. So you definitely want them to part of it because they are part of the community. Oh, even a dollar tied to end of twenty eighty, they should have city in this as well, because those are communities that you want to grow as well. I'm large town, small, all towns, all places, whether it's for housing or business, but they're, they're still. It's critical.
or business, but they're, they're still, it's critical. Yeah, it's like you want them to be involved at what level can they afford?
And oftentimes I think their contribution of time will be just as important.
Yes.
An area of discussion. Very none. All bearers say aye.
Aye.
Here. Your office, her. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
It's exciting. Next, I have to agree, not liberty, and I think I'm urging employees.
Lance, uh, Rebecca Drucker from the lawyers off the panel, where benefits and the benefits manager and the brought by the head of the Liberty National, uh, and, uh, or president or, or mother to the neighbor and then was received. And we can either find that or not. And they provide life insurance products, disability products, some cancer policy, a colleague, a policy, a bunch of other policies. Uh, and so that's what we're, uh, deciding whether we want to renew it or not at this point.
We have a few included, very few included, talking already. I, I guess I don't have a problem with allowing them to redo.
Right. My question is, um, and I had some personal experience with them, that I think we're, we've got some other options with Julie Devine, uh, that are uh, in place. So I don't believe we're taking potential, uh, benefit away from anybody. But the, my recommendation and I'll say in a motion momentarily, that would allow people currently on their products to continue, but we wouldn't take any new enrollment going forward. So, um, just personally, um, it's just been many hassles to, uh, submit claims, follow-up claims and for something that's potentially needed in a time of an accident or a critical health event, uh, time of a very critical event. And so I think that our options with Julie and her company will likely be a better fit for our staff going forward. So my, I'll make a motion to, uh, allow current Liberty National benefits members to continue, but not to take any new enrollment.
I will second it.
It's been segmented in discussion. Does that make progress that, Joey?
Okay.
There is, there is no more. All bearers say aye.
Aye.
There is. Excellent consideration to approve there and prepare for their report.
Plan.
Lance, I've made a motion to accept.
I'll second it.
And move to seconded in discussion. Very none. All bearers say aye.
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 There is. Next, I have change status.
I will make a motion to per the change of status for the pay increase for Tanner LaShay in the auditor's office, his real estate elections third. Um, it's his one-year anniversary. And it's effective January twenty-fourth, twenty-three.
I will second that, Renee.
They move to seconded in discussion.
Um, yeah, his hourly rate will be going to nineteen-seven thousand an hour.
When we have a discussion. There is no, I hear you say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There is.
Lance, I made a motion to approve the change that for Ashley Clackey at a rate of twenty dollars an hour. She's full-time in the auditor's office. She's completed a six-month probationary period effective January twenty-fifth.
I'll second it.
It's accepted in discussion. There are no, all bearers say aye.
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 Oh, she carries.
And I will make a motion to approve the change of status for Michelle Witt. Um, back to January forty of twenty-three for a pay increase. She's had added responsibilities of um, taking care of the county website. And her salary will be going to forty thousand four sixty-two fifty.
I'll second that.
And move to seconded in discussion. None. All bearers say aye.
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 There is.
Lance, I've made a motion to approve the resignation of Lake Drone, Lake Jones, effective February seventeen, twenty twenty-three. He's a truck driver at Secretary Road to the rate of twenty-three thirty-nine an hour.
Second it.
And move to seconded in discussion. Very minimal. I hear you say aye.
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 Which carries.
And the last one we have is change status for Robert Drake, back to January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Um, it is a resignation for permanent part-time transport officer.
I'll second that. It's been moved to seconded in discussion. There are none. All bearers say aye.
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 Aye. There is other business. Five o'clock, we have our conference board meeting with, uh, the assessor.
Home mayor's board members.
And I will be here currently. Any other business? I can ask a couple of town then. Did, uh, anybody sign up?
Um, I didn't sign it, but I just want to introduce myself, the best company, and then the new editor of the newspaper.
Oh.
Nice. Is there any signatures on it, right? Can I have that?
Oh, yeah.
Well, Jim, you're the one who signed up. Any more public comments?
I thought I had signed up. No, thank you for your support on behalf of the whole steering committee. And of course, Lion Energy, we're very committed to your county. Thank you.
Obsessively, but. This is our conversation. Morning, morning, Jim.
I remember I can confirm our recess.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Then you can say your own.
Aye.
There is, thank you.
Are you always on this?